Well, good morning. Thanks, everybody, for coming early on a Saturday. I sure appreciate that. We are going to call the order at 8:39 a.m. We'll start with the invocation and the pledge. Dear Lord, I pray that you guide us always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, strengthen us as we make tough decisions. I pray that we will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. I pray that we'll be fruitful. Father, please guide us so that this meeting can be productive. Let us be effective and decisive. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item three is public comments. Cooper, Kaylin, and Courtney, does Courtney want to speak?
No, I just signed this on it, just me, but I'll let Kelly go first or Kristi go first, excuse me.
Sure. Do you own a miss and or can you listen to me say? Kristi Smith, 36630 Canyon. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for serving as council and Mayor Boudreaux for serving long dedicated hours with half staff in putting up with all the social media attacks. Secondly, council, I hope you're not listening to outside ears and you have a clear ear for the best decisions for Simonton. I was disappointed I wasn't at the last meeting. However, I watched online. What a waste of the residents' time to 9:15 for silly comments and questions of unfamiliar area with a small city municipality. Anyway, that was very frustrating. People living in the past and questioning the small city laws without really understanding, we are a small city and we fall under the laws in the state of Texas as a small city. Should we love still now that you're working on budget? I say at every meeting, I will continue to say it, many of us have invested tons of money into our houses, way up into $500,000 to stay here because we love Simonton. Simonton, when people followed the rules, people took pride in this community. We didn't have outside agitators. We all fell as one as a community. I would still love to see a part-time city enforcement officer. Number one, for the constant junk vehicles, the junky down-run properties, people not following the FEMA guidelines, which are federal law that are constantly broken in our neighborhood, and it affects us all because we can all be denied homeowner's insurance. Anyway, and I would also love to see us move forward into zoning. I just feel like these last two to three years have been stagnant with all the waste of time on this social media and all these people wanting open records. I feel like our small little city crew is not able to get stuff done that we really need done as a city. We're the people of the city. Y'all work for us. I hope you're billing for all these open records requests and would love to see some road repair. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Sorry, processing. I'll remain seated as well, if you don't mind. I'm here today for several reasons. One, I've done the budget for the last two years, in case you guys have any questions I can help you. Second, there's a very important law in place that could possibly mean several things for the city of Simonton. It's new as of April 17th, called SB 1851. Eric brought it to your attention at the last budget meeting, but it means you cannot, you're wasting your time if you try to go over 27 cents, 27.1 or whatever the number is, in the fact that you're only going to gain about $12,000 and it's going to cost you a hell of a lot more to fight the AGU. So you might want to start there instead of the 28 cents. Again, it's only a $12,000 difference. And the law went into effect in, well, officially, September 1st, but it was passed way back in April, and it's due to the audits not being done within 180 days of the fiscal close of the year, which would have been February when they were originally due. So again, I did the budget for the last couple of years, so if you guys have any questions on it or have any, need any, any blueprints answered, I'm here. And that's all I got.
Can I say something on that to mine now that she's...
Go ahead. Public comments is the time to do it.
Okay, so that was actually going to be in my notes. So if you're going through budget and you see that two, like, roads that are terribly in need of repair that are going to cost a ton of money, and we took an ad-halorn tax that was basically minimal money for a homeowner like me, whose house is valued at 500,000, it would be giving the city $350 more a year, and we just put ourselves into bankruptcy for the next 12 years, we're not going to get road repairs. So my recommendation was, take this to the voters. Let the voters that elected y'all vote and bring it back to where it needs to be. That was my thought, if we need it.
Can we talk back?
No. You can at a workshop.
Why not? It's a workshop.
You can at a workshop.
Hold on one second. Let me capture what everybody's saying, and then I'll back to you, Eric. Okay. Sorry, go ahead. You want to have some discussion?
It's okay. All right. So I'd like to comment on something you said. Absolutely. I would love to go to the voters. I'd love to go to the voters and say, if you want to do every road in Simonton, you vote for a dollar, and you just pay the tax, right? But there are other ways. There are other ways. We have zero debt. You could do a bond. You could have the voters vote on a bond that we pay back over 20, 30 years. There are other ways, not just for everybody to scream and holler, we can't do, can't do, and blame the council. Nope. We just need to get creative, and if we get creative, there's a lot more that we could probably accomplish. We've just got to be together on it, that's all. Thank you, Lord.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else want to make a comment? Okay. Thanks, everybody. We will move on to workshop. So council, I gave you something, a page, the 2025 Budget Overage Report for reference, and I think a good place to start is to look at the budget that we are working with today. Pull it up for everybody else to be able to see at the same time. We'll start here, and then we'll go straight to that. This is just for your information. We talked about FundView and the tool, and can we see more about it? I am not the expert. I'm going to give you at least the first page of that shop. So we're working on budget. This is just the opening homepage, okay? We'll get to budget in just a second, but it's telling you, now that all of our accounts, which have been updated into FundView this year, including investments and all the things, you can see the chart. This is what's most relevant to what we're doing today, revenue by category, just because it's often easier to see in visual. Now, this is this year that we're currently in, not the budget that we're going to be working on, but we're going to do modeling that's very similar to that, just so that you know. So you can see that your ad-halorn and your sales and property are almost equal. So when we have a lot of discussion about the ad-halorn rate, because you're setting a levy rate on everybody who lives here, absolutely get that, but that's about equal parts with the sales tax that comes in. So that's just FYI, we can dive into that another day if we want to go even deeper into that. And then this shows you budget versus actual, where we are right now in September. We've still got August bills coming through, and so we've got another probably 45 days of information that'll be added to this. But you can see that in every category except public safety, we're spending less than our budget. Good news, right?
Well, yes and no, because maybe there are things we could have gotten done.
Well, there are lots of things that are, you know, there are things that are over, but when you look at the averages, like, you'll see some on that sheet that I gave you. So then what we did, I saved the pages, and my computer crashed right before everybody got here, so bear with me a tiny bit. Would go into the budget. That's my book. I sent all of y'all this, and it's in your book. We're going to talk about tax rate in a few minutes. This is the small taxing unit notice that comes from the Tax Assessor Collector's office. And so the rate that we're talking about, this is the maximum rate, because the council already had shared that you don't have interest in raising a rate any higher than the no new revenue, and that we do not want to go to an election because their intent is not to raise rates this year. So it would be different if we had decided that, we would have made notice, the process would be a little bit different.
I can't quite see that, Laurie. Is that 28?
Yeah.
So 27 is a no new revenue rate, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. So you put your notice, we put our notice for the highest possible rate.
Makes sense.
So that council then has the freedom to decide which one you're going to choose. If you do your, and this hasn't gone out, it's not posted yet, we can still change it, but if you post a lower rate and then you have your workshop and decide, we really need to do a higher rate, you can't do that if you've reached the public posting requirement date. We're not there yet, so this is just ahead of, it's ahead of schedule.
That's excellent, but what I saw on the posting for the vote on the 9th was 28, right?
That's right.
And you're saying you can't change it? You can change it by vote of the council, correct? You posted...
I don't understand what you're saying can't be changed.
Okay, public posting on the paper outside?
Yeah.
We have a rate.
It's the same rate.
Right, 28. So if we want 27, we can change that at the meeting.
Right, you're proposing a rate. So you have to do two, two different instances during this process. On Tuesday, you're going to propose a rate. Again, I put the higher rate, you may decide you want to do something else, but that way you're, you have the opportunity to do that as a maximum or something lower. And then as we get later into the process, on the 23rd is when you'll actually vote on the final rate. So you have to propose it, and then you have to adopt it.
Okay.
So there is room for change between Tuesday and the 23rd. Does that make sense of what you're asking?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is the same budget report that you have in your binder. We'll look at that in just a minute. Right up here to where it says accounts over budget. Again, we're talking about the current year that we're in, not the new year. But I feel like this is a good starting place, because I want to see where are we spending more than what we budgeted, and do we need to? Was there a special instance? Why do we do that? So this sheet is what you're looking at, is the result of that. This is easier to see than that, because it just isn't friendly to go to screen view and FundView. But we could go through each one of those lines, if you like, or if you have questions about certain lines. But the green lines, the green highlight are income lines. So we've taken in $59,540 more than budget total on those lines. So each line says how much more we took in, it's just in the green highlight. So the first one is under building permits, we've taken in so far $535 more than was in the budget. That's not a negative thing, but it's on the list because it's an overage. Okay, so all of those green ones would be like that. The ones that are not green, I've added, went through in FundView and opened each one and added what that expense is for. So the very first one was apparel and promotion. For Keep Simonton Beautiful, they bought team shirts. Trying to see what's the next one that might be interesting. Capital Improvement. I think capital improvement needs to be posted in a different bucket, because we budgeted for it, so it should match in the same line item, but it is capital improvement, so I see why it got put there, but we can do that with adjustments coming up without any trouble. But that's why it's $156,214 over. That's the grant money that we spent for that City Hall project.
Are we done? Is it finished?
The construction's done, but the grant's not closed. We have to wait for the GLO.
So I understand that there was like 27,000, 21,000 or so left in that grant to spend?
No.
I saw the figure somewhere.
We spent, I don't know where the 21 would come from.
Why would you have to wait for the GLO to open if that's the project?
I'm sorry, we're discussing right now. This is not, this is not a time for you to join in. I don't have the thing in front of me, but it came out about six, I want to say 6,000-ish that we didn't spend.
Okay.
We put some shelving in, it was much less expensive, so maybe it comes down to four. So there's a small amount, and, but we spent all the grant money first, and then the EDC committed $77,000 to cover the difference, because we added on some things. So if that money's unspent, it'll belong to the EDC. So the books aren't closed for this year, but we'll, everything gets appropriated to the right line. Does that make sense?
Yeah, the 77,000, I did have a question on before, and it's like, what you're saying is that they had already dedicated 77,000 before, since last year?
Yes.
To the ARPA?
Yes, because the council made a decision to do a project that costs more than the grant award, so they needed, the estimate was we would need $77,000 to do that. EDCs agree that that would be something they were interested in funding.
Okay.
So that's what, that's where that comes from. So if there's an overage, it'll go back to the EDC.
Which one?
A.
Okay.
On the line with equipment replacement, it's a standout when you have something that costs exactly a flat dollar amount, so $15,000. To me, I always look those up, like, why? I never get an invoice that's exact amount. That's because that was the air conditioner for the office. The internet, Stacey's going to look that up for us. We've got internet changed some this year when we, when they updated the fiber and then we added the landline, the, sorry, it's not landline, I think it's called VoIP phone system.
VoIP, VoIP, Voice Over Internet.
Yeah. So she's going to double-check that one with me to make, because we changed where telephone and internets were being posted in last year's budget, so we're just going to verify, did we post them in the right buckets? Is this where it belongs? The dollar amounts are right, but we need to check and make sure if it belongs in this bucket, so we'll be doing that confirmation.
Question. Question. The whole concept of having communications in the office between internet, phones, hotspots, all that other stuff, right? Has it ever been like revisited with council and saying, what do we really need, and can we get away with something less? I mean, if you want fiber and you want Starlink and you want hotspots and you want phones, I mean, it seems to be like, to me, an overkill. The question would really be, we have an emergency, what do we need? And that's really the ultimate question, right?
It is, and that's why there's redundancy.
That's where the redundancy came from.
Like having T-Mobile hotspots, for example.
But do we need triple, what's the redundancy? You're going to be in charge of the emergency when it happens.
Right.
He's going to be right there with you, helping you, right? The education, everything training he's had comes to bear. So you have to be able to be communicating with everybody, outside, inside, so does he.
Right.
Do we?
Not all council members participate.
Right.
It's up to whether or not they want to volunteer and get trained.
So how many council members have phones?
None.
Okay. Hotspots?
Hotspots are issued when it comes to time for an event if we need it.
So you hold them back?
So if he needed a hotspot, then...
Someone, an event happens, they have to go to wherever the location's, wherever you're...
I understand.
For field location.
Yeah, so activating those, you activate on, at that time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's no charge other than that?
No, we pay for them all year.
I thought so.
Yeah, you'll see them farther into the budget pages.
Okay.
So it's certainly something that can be worked on, it's just a matter of somebody who has the time, energy, and commits to working on doing a review of what we have, and there's absolutely no reason that that can't be a project. Line item 1405311 in maintenance and repair, it's not a huge overage, but that's the one that's where we put our well. We had to have the well service and the pump changed out this year. Bureau Bear talks...
I'm sorry, you described it well, but is it on FundView that way, where I can see the line items that are AC, well repair, et cetera?
Yes, actually, let me show you something.
Good.
It's not this line item, but I printed out the biggest one, which is the technology, almost the last line of the sheet.
We can wait if you want.
And this is huge, because it's, I mean, it doesn't matter what order, but if you want to share, since they're so enormous, I just made a couple of these, but if I did them on regular paper, nobody could read that. So this is a detailed report for line item 100-10-5030, technology. So you could go, and I did this for each one of these line items, but I didn't need to give you an avalanche of paper. Any line item you ever want to know about, we can look it up just like this. This is why it's so important that we are putting everything in FundView. We don't make a payment before it's in FundView, so they don't miss things and lose the track of the paper, it's not paper, but the record-keeping portion.
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Want to try again? This is excellent, by the way, but the very first line brings a question for me. In 8/19/2025, we had a new computer for Simonton Council III and setup within press, $1,400. It was a new one? We got a new one? Because we had talked about...
Yes, the one in the lobby. We got a vote yes on the one for the lobby at the desk right there, because that's the one that was not going to be supported with...
So it's already changed out?
Yeah, it did this week.
Okay, and so council asked for an impress bid to change out all the computers and upgrade them? I don't remember what you came back and told us that you were going to do about it.
We have a bid back from them. We haven't taken any action on it, because we didn't have budget. We had the budget. And remember, they said they're not in terrible condition, their age is why they were on the list, and you wanted to look at the details of what they were offering.
Right, and so all I'm asking is, we could have had the, we could have had the bid back to council, we had time, did we not? I mean, it just, it's 4,000, it's 4,000 something like that dollars? I don't think that's extravagant when we still have money to spend.
We talked about it at a council. We talked about it, and they said that we didn't.
Not the bid, not the bid. We talked about the timing, which we said, they're going to, we're just going to go back to what they said they were going to do for once a quarter or whatever, right?
No, 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 they said that they came and checked everything out, and they said we didn't need to do that.
I understand that, of course.
Yeah.
And what that means is that you're running on that older equipment, one of them is the oldest, is the one you're talking about there.
Which is this one.
And what you're saying is that's done?
The desktop model that's at the window in the lobby. The council already approved to replace that one, because it's the only one that is not going to have its software support.
I understand, but is it done?
It's done, yeah.
You spent it and it's done, so is that the one that Julie would be using?
No.
Okay, it's a desktop, not a laptop.
That's right.
Okay.
So I plugged in, when we get to budget in a few minutes, I plugged in where we talked about perhaps we budget for two laptops this year if we need them, instead of all four. Y'all can change it to anything you want. So we'll get to that here shortly. Do you have questions about any of the other lines? Or do you have questions about technology? Okay, I'm going to give you a quick note, one more thing about this technology page. The T-Mobile, y'all know those are the hotspots, so it's $61.34 a month. The AT&amp;T listed here at 33307, that's also for, we call it emergency operations. So this telephone is a separate bill for the mobile phones versus the bill that has the phones for the City Hall in it with the fiber, the internet. So you'll see AT&amp;T again later on a different line item. The answer is, we split it in two different things, because it's two different applications.
So is there a place to put a note? You have to remember this. So is there a place to put a note either in FundView or somewhere else on the differences?
Yes.
Oh, is there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are we going to do that?
They're already in there. This is just, I printed a capture page, so you could see, when you pull this up, and here's the report, you can do this for every single line item, just so that you can have a view of it, and this is a good one, since we have AT&amp;T and more.
What is, what is easy task?
That's the webpage.
220, huh?
No, I think it's 220. Sorry. I don't know why there's a single one there, but let me ask. We're going to look it up. Okay?
So the one right above it, Civic Plus, that's a vendor, I guess.
Yes.
And what did it provide us? That's the...
That's the Archive Social software.
Archive Social.
Okay.
But we don't have access to going in and looking at all the notes and everything in FundView, or we do. As you may comment, if you go in and look, I didn't think you had access to one of these.
You all don't have access, but anytime, if you were to ask for any...
I got it.
If you wanted to look at anything, we can pull it for you, or you can come and view it with us.
Okay.
So answer what you're asking.
Yes.
Okay. All right, other questions about that?
Each T-Mobile is a phone?
It's hotspots.
Okay, the T-Mobils are all hotspots, and they're all the same price?
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
Okay.
Now, I think what I pray for you is easier to read, but I'm going to show you. We can see if we want to. Do it on screen. I should have grabbed a mouse, so we're here. So this is how, this is where you do the magic of putting the items into the budget. You can pull it up, and you can see it tells us what we're spending this year, you know, what was our budget this year, then tell you what you're spending. So the other report that you have printed, and I put the cover on it that says, this is a financial statement for reference, that's what I used in conjunction with what the current budget is, to go in and make changes or recommendations of changes. So the printed report that I gave you, I think it's the last one, to make it fast for you to get to.
I'll do that. One last question on this. Are we done with this?
Yeah. What's your question?
It's just FundView. I'm seeing FundView AP, GL, and CR, 3,900, that's for an annual, right?
Right.
And then agreement...
They just break it into three different parts of the service they provide.
And then agreement for, I guess, PY and BP. What is PY? I think BP should be budget planning.
I don't know.
PY is payroll.
It would be, payroll would be under technology only.
No, it's all through FundView, so...
I know, but this is under all technology only, though.
Well, all, this is software, so it is under technology.
Payroll?
No, it's the application with the pain, the application with the funding.
Application in FundView has different modules to do the payroll module.
Got it.
Got it. General ledger and the things.
So, wow, pretty expensive, seven or eight thousand a year for FundView. Okay?
Not really. Average software, a year piece of software is $25,000, $30,000 a year or so.
Well, yeah, you're going to go to the, to the big ones.
Well, the bigger one's $150,000. Epicore, there were some other ones that we've used.
NCO?
Using SAP.
Okay, well, we certainly cannot afford $150,000. So our $7,000, $8,000 is much better for us so far. So I gave you the reference, you can take it, so you can look at it yourself and compare, or we can go to it right now and look at a page if you want to look at something, but this is the same financial statement, same type that I gave you recently in council, and it, so it keeps giving you the most update, budget versus actual, right? So then the budget, proposed budget, it has a cover saying budget draft two, yeah. And for everybody who may not have...
Well, the bigger one is $150,000. Epicore, there were some other ones that we've used.
NCO?
Using SAP.
Okay, well, we certainly cannot afford $100,000. So our $7,000, $8,000 is much better for us so far. So I gave you the reference. You can take it, so you can look at it yourself and compare, or we can go to it right now and look at a page if you want to look at something. But this is the same financial statement, same type that I gave you recently in council, and so it keeps giving you the most update budget versus actual. Right? So then the budget, proposed budget, and it has a cover saying budget draft two. Yeah. And for everybody who may not have worked on this before, I'm just going to restate so if it's things you already know, y'all just stop me because I don't want to. Hopefully, it's all the things that are... Yeah, that should be it.
Oh, I didn't have that.
So the pages, so each category has summary pages at the beginning, and then there are supportive pages behind it, that those totals in the supportive pages roll up to the totals. So when you see that there are eight different pages for EDC A and EDC B, it's just because each category has its own page, and then it rolls up to the summary page. So the very first one that says draft two on it, this is the summary page. First part is revenues, and the second half is expenses. And then the farther back you go in the deck...
All right, sorry.
The farther you go back in the deck, the lower and more granular the detail. So this isn't a balanced budget yet, but that's normal at this stage in the game because we need to make sure that we've got everything that's important to you. And there are still things in here that I need to verify before we said this was final. Like, all the encumbered money from 2025, is it, was it spent? Is it carrying over? For example, roads is going to carry over money that was committed by previous council because that roadwork hasn't been done yet. We need to make sure that that's still accounted for in this budget on both expense and income lines. So bear with me, you'll see on this first one is the reason I'm bringing it up, that your total revenue and your total expense don't match, don't panic. When you see expenses of $2.3 million, that's because the grant for drainage and roads is $1.55 million, and it needs to be in here as well because we're going to receive that money and we're going to spend that money. So it comes in on both income and expense sides. So then as you get into the later pages, even the second page starts with the general fund. If it's got the number codes out on the side, 100-412, that's still a summary, but you can, that points back to the EDCs. You go farther, the next, you'll see that the number coding changes, it adds admitting numbers. So when you're really, I think this is page seven, general fund administration, 100-10-5001 is the first line where you're entering or you're looking at the granular level of the expenses here.
So the EDC fees on this page, right, that's what, income to him?
What's the...
I'm back on page three. I'm a little slow maybe. We're flying through this.
Well, I was just giving you an explanation of what the different pages are. So what's your question back on three?
Well, I'm looking at three and the EDC fees. I mean, that's what the revenue they get.
Yeah, that's...
But it comes to us and then we have to give it to them.
That's right.
All right, so that's the one quarter cent.
A half a cent and a quarter cent.
They get a quarter from sales tax.
B and A get different rates.
I understand, so...
Right, so they both mix each other.
Yeah.
B gets half.
Okay.
And A gets a quarter.
They don't like it. All right, so this is again, is we get the revenue, we have to give it to them. So there is going to be this income, and then there's going to be an expense. And on the EDC report, we should see an income.
That's right.
All right, and we will. Okay, and then the things below, technology fund, fees in, administrative audit, they're paying us back, right, for certain things?
Well, this is an income line, so if they were getting money, those would be income lines for them if something was coming to them. That's not, that's why they're zero.
Okay.
But later in the deck, you'll see the expense lines where if they're paying the city, AP, to do administration, then the city sees that as an income, the EDC shows it as an expense. Does that make sense?
Oh, it makes sense, I'm just looking for it, that's all. Maybe jumping ahead.
You're going to see it later in the more granular detail as we go. Okay, so page seven is the first page of the general administration, and it's important because we've included, I've included, because we discussed it in general terms, the needed funding for both the city administrator, the city secretary, and part-time person. So that's why you see changes versus last year for health insurance. You'll see some more of it moving around in the payroll here in a few minutes.
So, okay, so the working, this is a planning forward?
Sorry.
Is this planning forward?
This is, right, so this is a draft where it says 2025 working. Ignore the title because it wants to pick up the first year in the name of the column. So 2024 current is really the 2425 year, and the next column is 2526.
Got it.
It's just called working and that's what, that's what we are working on right now. So we don't usually use this line for health insurance. Not that we don't, but we used it differently. The only thing that I'm proposing that we put in that line right now is the next level, which is something new that we're offering here. Okay, I absolutely said that wrong. That would be for full coverage healthcare and next level, and it is in the same line. So I apologize that I said that wrong, but that's why you see a double, just about.
So those things covered in the contracts we signed with deployment agreements?
It is less than, hold on. I think we budgeted, we changed and we budgeted and took out the salary for the city administrator last year, but I don't think the insurance got removed. I'll have to go verify that. I did this many a time last night, but I've done them all then. We had to do a budget adjustment after the budget was adopted last year because we took out quite a few things in order to pay for some other things, and that item didn't get changed in the adjustment or the original. So that's why we didn't spend it all, which is totally fine.
What month did we do the adjustments? Was it before?
October.
October of last year, okay.
Yeah, because the EDC budgets were removed, and we can't do that when we're receiving tax money for it. So we put the EDCs back in, made a couple of shift arounds like that telephone, where it should be captured and all that. Anyway, so a notable one is Technology, 1010-5030. I listed out all of the things that belong in that bucket so everybody can remember. It's in FundView, so whoever looks at it next or next year, or if we want to change things or import them differently, we could always do that. But this way, it's a good reference tool that lives on.
So we're proposing, we're proposing a 40% increase?
We are, but, pardon me, because we're consolidating all of the things in one place. I'm trying to move everything from something is in this bucket and something in this bucket to one bucket, so you'll see a reduction in some of the other categories. Technology pages.
So is there a possibility like, you have 5030, so could there be a 5031, a 5032 under technology?
As far as I know, as far as I know, yes. I'm not the expert about that, so we need to verify, but I think yes, names could be changed, we could use a different bucket and change the name of it, or we could see about adding one or something.
So the only thing I would worry about is we already had difficulty in taking and placing receipts and everything else into FundView because of miscategorizing, that's why you had Peacock and the whole thing, right?
Well, partly.
Okay, so partly. So the point is, is that significant monies might want to be on their own under technology, only because it brings it to light each time it says, wow, this thing is going up, this is going up.
Easier for continuity if you have a personnel change or something, right?
Having a different GL code for each one of these expenses?
Only the majors.
What would constitute a major?
I would think, let's see, $11,000 impress, FundView, FundView is more than seven, isn't it? $7,000? Those two, first right off the bat. Only because if you don't, if you don't...
Yeah, general codes.
The only question is, can we get further definition under some of these, on any of these? If you can, then it's just a question of whether we want to as a council.
Did the previous council actually want those rolled up? I can't remember. They were separate before, and then we rolled it up into this, and now we're asking to unroll it?
Oh, I...
I didn't ask to unroll it. I just wanted to know if we can classify it.
I'm just asking a question.
Understand?
I don't know that they were asking for it to be consolidated. We were trying to get, and they were asking for clarity and continuity about which items are in which bucket. So the ability to see it like I just showed you with a very granular report, I think that's always been there. I don't know if we've had the knowledge of how to use it. I could be wrong about that because they have done a software update this year and added some more functionality. So whichever way, we can get down to the very granular level, and I know that there can be changes made, Eric, I just don't know all the details about the extent. So I took it as an idea...
That's fine.
...to investigate. But if we don't do that, I'm trying to continue to populate notes in there every year, add more, add more, add more, so that it's helpful as a tool to go back and look. Where you see that there are changes, like office supply and postage, mileage reimbursement, community outreach, I made those recommendations. If council wants to do something different on any of those lines, you let me know. But I took that budget, that financial statement that I told you about and looked at, how are we looking for this year? If we didn't spend it all, and there's not something that we know about that would cause us to keep it there, I've taken it out so that we can put that $109,000 for a city administrator back in our budget, along with the other expenses that go with hiring somebody.
So the payroll, we have, it's again, it's payroll is one item on here with a huge increase, 32%, because that's where you want to put, I'm sorry, 10105200 payroll.
Payroll.
So...
So that's adding the city administrator back.
I understand. So what I'm, the other reason I asked about breaking it down further is that we had lots of discussion on who could do what, and you don't have an administrator, and you go hire contractor, and you go hire part-time, you go hire seasonal. Why don't we put two more line items? And one of them saying, these are, these, the payroll for full-time employees, and you throw $100,000 in there saying it's an administrator. Seasonal, if you had one for Chris, somebody you need for Chris. Part-time, contract, just four. And then we could put money in each and say, that's what our authority is, let's just go do it. Because the council's saying, we already divided it up and you can go do it. That's all, just for clarity really, without any other discussions needed afterwards.
So the notes that she already has, you're just saying, take each note and give it its own line, because it hasn't broken down?
No, it has two, it has 70 and 109. Those two would be added together.
And 32.
So 70 and 109 are salaries, so that would be full-time employees. So you add them together and say, we have full-time employees, 179. All right, and then you'd go, okay, we have part-time staff we want to hire, 32K. Well, a contractor is not necessarily a part-time staff because even the contract we have says seven days.
Right, so you put that in consulting for next year.
Consulting contracts, that's the bucket.
It could be named whatever, if you want to name it.
But it's still kind of like, it's still kind of like a payroll, is it done? I'm paying somebody.
Yeah, but they're not employees.
I was going to say payroll's a little bit more technical, but I'll, so I'll check and see what the options are about.
Because consulting, we have so much under consulting. That's why if we could get this little breakdown on would be great, but we have so much we throw into consulting, like LJ, everybody gets thrown into consulting, right? And that's a big bucket. I just want to better understand some of the details.
I got the note.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So payroll tax and retirement changed in equal measure, right, if we could tie those people together. So that's added back this year, and that's why you see those changes.
So on that one, is it true that we have 18K overpaid in TMRS?
18K.
Yeah, overpaid.
We have an overpayment, but I don't think it's $18,000. I'll have to ask for an update.
Which is good, actually, if we have an overpayment, that means we don't need to contribute that 18K. I saw that somewhere, Lori, and it's, it has to do with, I don't know if it was Jennifer or somewhere, where we paid and whatever.
We've had a couple of errors and overpaid it, and they will not return it, so you have to just keep using your balance to pay it down. Yeah.
How nice of them.
I will, I take a note to find out how much it is right now.
Okay.
That could be against 110-5210. Okay, got it? We had, when we had Janie here as contract, we had her in human resources, and that's why you see $88,500 was budgeted, and I'm saying it needs to be $500. I'm not doing it that same way, so that's what that change is about. It really is that significant drop.
What is $500 going to do?
I don't know.
Not much, huh? Okay.
Legal notices, we've spent, $2,000 is just more than we've ever spent on it, and we don't see anything coming up that's going to be significantly different, so I cut that in half. Attorney fees, that's a tough one.
Very.
I don't see a significant reduction in our use compared to last year, but we budgeted 52, we didn't, we're not using all of that, so that's why I'm recommending we reduce that to 45. And that'll have a lot to do with the decisions we make about how we interact with them.
And what was it in years past? Not last year, like years past, like what's the, I know it's gone up.
Back in the day?
Yeah.
It's probably, I want to say the average was $12,000 to $15,000. And we've been as high as $75,000 in the last couple of years.
So if we're really curious, we should ask them to break it down as to what is actually proposed up, right?
They do.
Well, I asked for...
It's gotten more detailed over time, too.
Right, right.
I think they've changed their policy at the law firm.
Good. Details, good.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's the only way we can figure out how to control it.
Right. The last item on the page, 5262 for travel and training, Eric, that is where if somebody goes to the TML.
TML conference.
Eric signed up to go to the TML, so that's where we would have the...
So speaking of that...
Membership fee or the fee to attend plus the hotel, we would put mileage things and that sort of thing.
So $5,000 is good for me, but I think training, because we have training that all of us need to take, we have training that the, I don't know if we're going to pay for secretarial training.
We are.
So $5,000 may not be enough, as far as I'm concerned. But I also need the council to vote so that I can represent City of Simonton at the TML conference to vote on legislative issues that they're going to bring to the legislature. So I think I'll reach out an email on that.
We did.
And so just a confirmation, and then some, probably you have to tell TML, he's our representative, and then I can actually go in there and say, some of this legislature stuff, I don't think we want to go with, or whatever. But everybody should know what it is, because you can get on TML and see what it is.
Right.
Okay? And if anybody has comments, I'll be glad to take them in.
Sure.
Thank you.
I would say the average trip to, let's say, TML, for example, it's always in Texas, so it's not terribly far most of the time, is less than $1,000. If we have, I'd be shocked if everybody went, but if we want, if you want to plan to do that, some cities do, and air everybody goes, or multiple cities go.
When is it?
It's at Texas Municipal League Conference.
When?
It's later this month.
29/30/31, October, October 29/30/31.
Sorry, October, not September.
That's okay.
Yeah.
When is it? October 29/30/31 is in Fort Worth. You get on a TML site, you can register. It's a little late, so...
So, typically, the group would get together and say, this is, we would like to go. And then the city registers everyone and makes the arrangements.
So, I jumped the gun.
If you have interest in doing that next year, then now's the time to budget for it.
And Lori let me know that, that could use the city card on it, but I had already paid for the hotel, so we'll just cover it up afterwards.
So, there doesn't have to be reimbursement. You'll have things you've got to pay for when you're there anyway, so try to not keep piling on, wits out of pocket.
I'll have the receipts.
Anyway, so if everybody, I didn't add it in because we don't have any plans for a contingent to go. We do have commitments for some training for Cheyenne and we probably would if we have another new employee. The type of classes that she's taking and that are on the horizon for her are ninety dollars, a hundred dollars. I think the most expensive one is a hundred and fifty dollars. Most all of them are virtual, but she will travel to a couple. They won't all be in the same year necessarily, so if we have some calculation or estimation of what we want to put in this line item, we can sure update it or leave it at sixty-five hundred, which is what it was last year. Y'all could think about it, let me know. Don't have to tell all that, but I mean, you could think about it till Tuesday. On the next page, page eight. Election costs, we get an estimate each election from the county elections office. Their estimate is eight thousand dollars for this year. Now, if it was eight thousand dollars last year, it only cost us seventy-two hundred. So, hopefully it'll be a little bit lower, but that's why I've increased that to eight thousand dollars. Notice of public hearings, the notices that we have to pay for these days are postings in the Fort Ben Herald. They're not expensive. And really, that's typically around budget time and before an election.
When should that stop with, since there's so few papers that publish anymore, right? I mean, it should be, maybe the legislature...
Legislature, sir.
Right, exactly. It's ridiculous.
Same thing. So, the first line, I should have mentioned subscriptions. You can see that I've reduced that. That's part of moving things that maybe should be technology, like Civic Plus, into that earlier line item instead of this line item. That's why there's a change, not that we're doing fewer things. Notary fees, I'm not even sure why we had, had put notary fees in last year, but maybe because we were unsure about our city secretary hiring at that time. But since we have no, two notaries on staff, I just removed that completely.
Do we charge for notarizing?
No.
Okay.
The line items fifty-five, forty and fifty-five, forty-one are on my list to work on because I think those transfers need to be entered, but I wasn't positive about it, so I haven't done it. And that's partly why we're not balanced yet. So, there's, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars almost that on your, when you saw it on the screen and you have a screenshot on your last page that shows we're not balanced by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think it's this, but so, that'll get updated as soon as I get verification from Peacock about that, for the proper way to account for that. The next budget is emergency management. Incident response is if we deploy equipment to hold back water from the Brazos River in Valley Lodge.
So...
You see a technology change there, a reduction, because I moved it over with the other technology items. It didn't, it wasn't specific to emergency management.
On the incident response? We, we put it in here every year because we know some year we're going to hit...
Some years we use it and some years we don't.
Right, and so, when we don't use it, where's the money go?
If we're doing a budget adjustment because we spent money on something else, something might get used from that. You don't, you just don't want a category as a total to go over. So, you might make a budget adjustment for to keep things more clear, which is what we've really done. But if it's unspent, then it goes to, oh, my word. Anybody's got the word, say it.
To reserves?
Reserves, thank you.
How about rainy day fund? We can call it a rainy day fund, so...
Well, that's kind of frowned upon in the county.
So, my only point on this one is if every year we got to put it into tax people to get thirty thousand, why wouldn't we just carry the thirty thousand over onto the budget and not have to go put it into as money needed? We already have it. Already have the thirty thousand.
You mean encumber it?
Yeah. I mean, if you encumbered it and said, we don't need to encumber anymore because you now has a hundred and thirty thousand, which is way too much or whatever, and we say, okay, we're done with that one, just leave it.
How much did we use last year of it that was in the budget?
She, twenty-sixteen?
I think it was the year before, all of it. And last year, the year we're in right now, we have not.
Okay, so you just never know, yeah.
So, I just think...
Some years we deploy twice in a year and you blow right on past it, so that's why we keep reserves too.
But I guess if we, if we built up an encumbered, Lori wouldn't even have to worry about it anymore. Pick a number, what do you need?
Yeah, we haven't used it this year. We're not through September yet.
If we do go over... You can still do from reserves if you had to. So, what, all I'm saying is, pick a number, let's say it's fifty thousand, seventy thousand. You've been accumulating it, you just put it in encumbered and we're done with that.
No, I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm going to the number in my head, just where should we be? What's, what's the, what's an expense we could see?
Are you, to you?
I, it's a great idea. Let me investigate and find out more about that. It would certainly free up thirty thousand dollars to do something else.
Correct.
Okay. The capital improvement line item, that's, I think we have a quote, an initial quote for three thousand dollars to put the mini-split into that emergency operations bathroom out in the garage. So, that's what that means about a mini-split, if everybody doesn't already know the term. Public safety. We receive eleven hundred dollars specifically for child safety programs. And so, that's why that's in there still.
Who gives us that?
We need to plan some projects about that.
Who gives us that?
From the state.
From the state? So, that could be something like car seats for people who can't afford them.
Yeah, or an event, like a car seat check event and you also do other related things while they're here. Make a safety event.
Yeah, so in California...
I think one of the EDCs, now the Emergency Operation Group was talking about that and made some preliminary plans for it.
In California itself, if you wanted to do it, but you could take your young children in and fingerprint. And then they would hold on to their fingerprints.
Is the EDC going to do that or is that something that counts?
The emergencies.
I'm sorry. You said I have a lot of resources there, so if that's something y'all want to do, I mean...
Excellent.
Yeah.
I'm writing it down, you're committed now.
Yeah, no, because I work with all of them, all of them.
She's on here, right?
I did.
Heard that?
It's on paper now.
Safety Fest is in a couple of weeks. It's the best place to go and... I type in.
We should go see it so we have an idea what we could do.
Type in.
Dr. Katie, type in touches.
Yeah, I've worked with all those organizations already, so...
I'll still be there. Work on the strip itself.
Yeah, no, it's, it's great, it's a great event.
Would you copy me because I would love to go see?
Yeah, I'll send you by.
How they do it. What is it?
Twenty-seven, September.
I put a note out on the right-hand... Everybody's got technology, what are we doing? That one is specific to Flock safety and it's a fourteen thousand dollar a year contract.
So, on Flock cameras? I think we'll eliminate them, let the county do them. I mean, if you think about it...
Well, that's not how it works in the city limits. The county won't just come and put them in.
So, we don't have them? I'm just serious about Flock cameras. There are two, two, two feelings on Flock cameras. One is it's an intrusion. The other thing is that everything, when they capture your license plate, your face or whatever else they capture, that, that goes to somebody and they accumulate that information.
So, there are a lot of safeguards built into this particular software against those things that you're saying. So, we can certainly consider that.
Well, I just want to discuss it from a standpoint of, is it an intrusion or not?
We can discuss it right now if you'd like. I don't know if you know what's going on in my family, but my sister was just struck by a vehicle last week while riding a bike.
In Galveston?
No.
Here?
Here, in Katy. She is fighting for her life. Flock cameras are why we know who did this.
Flock cameras in Katy?
On Kingsland specifically, if you must know.
Well, I'm just asking.
But yes, Flock cameras specifically. So, for us to have them out here, I mean, I don't know how, how in-depth you are with the things that are going on out here, but this isn't a perfect community. There's theft, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff. So, when you have somebody's vehicle that isn't a part of our community, it's, I mean, you get to see that. But again, they're not going to look at it just for their own thrills. They're going to do it when there's an incident.
And who are they?
The county, we don't have access to it.
Right, I understand, we don't.
The county does when we ask for assistance.
We have to request them to review it.
Police department.
And so, yes, I do know that things are happening in our little subdivision and trust me, they're going to always happen.
It's not just our subdivision. It's something consistent more than Valley Lodge.
Right, so where we actually put them, and you said that we eliminated the ones in our area by ropers and...
We didn't eliminate them. They did that as a favor for us. They did that because we were trying to deal with the state, so they moved them once we got our permit.
So, if I'm as concerned as she is, you'd put those back and pay for them.
So, the locations where they are...
Under where they are, they're on a two...
On the main arteries, capture. If something happens in Valley Lodge, they got to leave somehow and now the cameras can capture them. Where if it happened over here at City Hall, you might not...
So, they don't necessarily have to leave if they're within our area and just go home.
Well, even if they're, they were where they were previously, if they did it and they went home, you wouldn't see it.
So, you're telling me that everybody who ever passed, including all the trucks, everything that comes through here, because there's a lot of traffic, that they're going to sift through that and try to find a person who we can't even identify? That stole something?
It doesn't capture people, it's license plate reader only.
I understand, it's a link to somebody. Owner, at least, right? So, it's great that they caught the person who...
Are you not wanting it at all or what are you exactly...
I'm just saying, I'd rather the Fort Ben County cover.
They're not going.
They don't, they won't do it.
Do they have them anywhere?
They're all over everywhere, but the municipalities are paying for it. It's not the county.
The county's not paying for it.
So, if we decide we're no longer going to fund this, those cameras leave, go away, we don't have the resource. We, y'all, if the council decides to...
Can I share two Simon's?
No, you can't, she says you can't mention it anymore.
If you don't mind, just hold that for another time, that'd be...
I will.
So...
But we do have instances of, of positive outcomes in Simonton with the use of that.
Was it the ones that we had nearer to the subdivision?
Now, we have a, for, I know for sure of one silver alert where somebody was lost, it was confused and ended up like seventy-five miles from home. And the Flock cameras contributed to that in finding her before it was a problem. And then we've had some theft or high-speed chase type of things where they could tell where they were going. And I know there's been some thefts as they came through Simonton.
So, they leave, if they leave us, if they leave Simonton and let's say they're going north, there's nothing else going to happen until Brookshire, if Brookshire has cameras, right? If they're going that way, nothing's going to happen in Folscher because...
There's two or three ways to cut across to three fifty-nine, you can...
Wait, wait, wait. What I'm trying to say is, until you reach another municipality that has to put their own cameras in there, there's nothing in between.
That's right.
Okay. So, if I went up Pooh Hill and back around, I can escape, all cameras.
Well, they're going to pick you back up somewhere, whether that be in Brookshire or... I mean, like, we know that Polo Ranch has them, Folscher has them, so they're going to follow, they're going to keep following that person.
Right, but the county doesn't cover anybody and municipalities all have to pay the price.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
To answer a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, you're saying, did that answer my question?
Yes, did that.
Okay. I thought he said something else.
No, 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 did that. No, I was opposed to it first. I thought it was intrusive and then saw some, some of the other stuff and it was like...
Okay, so, God, I'm too old, but here's the thing. We all started off giving information freely and that was our credit card. I was in the credit business forever, right? I have a patent on the credit reporting system. And I'm trying to say that the more information we release on ourselves, the more government can control us. And AI is another threat. We just have lots of threats around us as far as being able to be controlled through information, both for positive and for negative, right? So, it's not just...
But the only information on those that we're giving out is DMV information that they already have. We're just, it's just a way to capture it. So, so it's not giving any additional information from anybody.
Well, maybe I'd like to have a conversation with people who do get it and see what, you know, just to have information on how they use it, when they use it. Does it have to be a call from somebody, anybody?
No, it has to be from a individual to, I want to say it's to the sheriff's office.
I think it's the sheriff.
It is the sheriff's office. And then they're the only ones that can access it.
So, anyone could call the sheriff and say, I had something happen, I want you to look it up?
They can tell them?
No.
No, it doesn't want to know.
That's what I was asking.
Police report, right. And it's the sheriff that pulls it.
They have to take your case and make a report number.
And then they pull the information and they look at it.
All right.
So, Flock was renewed in May. So, if council decided we don't want to renew the next cycle, we still have to pay our contract until May for budget reasons, to say.
I just may be the only one, but that's okay.
So, for the moment, I'm going to leave it in there at full price, hold them out. And if there needs to be a modification, we can do that before the end of the budget, okay?
And how do we, how do we, without causing a walking quorum, how do we get information to you if two other people want to say, we want to take it out?
We can discuss it in our, in a budget meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to discuss it in an open meeting. Send me an email or a phone call or a smoke signal, whatever.
Smoke signal.
And then we'll take action about it in, in a meeting, not in a workshop, but in an actual meeting. And it would be, we want to discontinue a Flock camera with the end of this contract on this date and we realize we got to pay the balance or whatever the terms are. So, we would do that in an open meeting.
Is that what you wanted to do?
No, I just wanted to know process because I seem to be the one overstepping process all the time. So, if two other people say, if two other people, I mean, I totally support...
So, honestly, Eric, I don't mind, or anybody, I will put an item in agenda if anybody wants it. I'm not, I haven't ever forced anybody to get the three and all that. If we think there's only one person interested, it should be a quick discussion. If it's not, then maybe everybody else hears what the points are.
For clarification, you're, you're talking about not necessarily agenda items, but just the information. If somebody does the legwork and the research on the information, how do we disseminate that information to everybody?
So, can, if somebody pulls something...
What you do, you send it to me or Cheyenne and we can send it out to everybody because we're not part of the quorum.
Okay. Okay, so I understood it correctly, okay.
It's just that, if, because you, you can't even talk to one person in, in essence. So, if I just talk to you...
But you can't talk to him and then go talk to her and you talk to him.
No, not me. I talk to him, he talks to her, she talks to her.
Correct.
That's a walking quorum.
That's right.
Legislation.
So, you're kind of like, kind of like council stuck.
Well, sometimes it can feel like that, but that's why we talk about it in open.
That's fine. Open is always good.
All right, back to page eleven. Building improvement, we have ten thousand, five hundred dollars that did not get spent for the sound system in this room that we wanted to add after construction was over. It's line ten, one hundred forty, fifty-three, nineteen. So, I put, that's what the note is about out there. So, we'll encumber that ten-five. I'm making a suggestion that we add another ten-five. Our first two bids that we've gotten are both about twenty thousand dollars.
And what are we going to get?
So...
That's for the sound and the recording, everything in here.
We'll make sure everybody's involved in what we're getting. I got two bids, done zero research on them, but if we set ourselves a twenty thousand dollar budget, it looks like we can get what you want, what we want. Or we'll part it out and make it smaller to start with, whatever. But so, you all decide if we want to add to that so that we have the full budget for this year, fifty percent of it. Fifty percent of it's already going to be encumbered.
And that money came from...
Council decision last year.
Oh, okay, not, not a grant?
No.
No. We encumbered it and carrying it over. Great, I like that.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Add $10,000 more.
You have to encumber more.
Didn't EDC agree to pay for some of that, too?
I don't know, did they? If they did, then we don't need it there.
It's in our budget.
EDC what?
100.
B.
141. I'm building it. I'll just have to write them down as we go.
Um, addition to that, if there's any money left over from the building project, can that go, can we, can we look at adding that as well?
Sure.
In that way, it covers...
Instead of going back to EDCA, or just going to here, oh, that makes sense.
It's already been approved to be used there, let's...
Yeah.
Let's just roll it around into it, it's still a part of it.
It is still a part of it.
So, it's still like use.
Yeah.
I don't see building expense.
Instead of going back.
You said it was in EDCB budget, you said?
For, to...
Building improvement?
For the sound system.
Okay, because I don't see building improvement or sound system on your budget yet, but maybe it's under something else. We'll get to that later. But, I like that idea, too, I mean, if we've got money somewhere else, we can use it.
We can turn it up.
No, just free...
You used to have a blanket in there.
I used to be a blanket.
Are you cold now?
I'm always cold, though.
That's funny.
From EDCB, right?
I like goosebumps.
All right, got it, I got both of those. All right, Public Works. Planning and zoning, we have $155,000 that will be encumbered for 2025. And then, the two lines, 5401 and 5405, that's the GLO grant money.
That's why that number's so high.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
And the dollar amounts are broken up specific to how they were granted. So, there's more money in road repair, because that's the grant award. So, they went from a budget of $95,000 to 1.7.
When, when do we, when do we discuss?
Oh, and you know what else I need, I'm really sorry, let me just capture this, I need to encumber that major road repair, $53,000.
You're saying you're going to, for encumbering that 53?
Yeah.
From the current, because we didn't spend it, right? So...
Yeah, and there is actually committed money from, that is unspent for roads, I'll need to make sure that's in here in the right place, too. Previous, encumber. Okay, while we're talking about road repair, so, this is going to be the project, the roads are already selected, the work's going to be done, council is not, I mean, we could change it, but it would not be in our best interest, because you could lose your funding. But, what you can do is add. Now, usually, we're looking at our budget, saying, that's why $53,000 was in there for last year, that's how much money was expected to come in and could be dedicated, that was it. But, we have talked off and on for a couple of years about wanting to increase the funding for the road project for two reasons. One, as you can see, Fort Bend County hasn't been able to get to us, because they are overburdened with requests from municipalities. They have offered us a partnership with somebody that has already been through the bid and vetting process for Fort Bend County, kind of like Yellowstone was for the trees, there's a couple of road companies. And you can bid out your projects to see if you, if we want to just get them done, it costs more, we can surely do that. Or, you can add on to the projects that we're requesting from the county with an additional funding, now's the time to do it, if you want to spend something from reserves.
The higher the contract, the more likely they are to come out and spend the time, correct?
It's about, sort of, yes. It's about the, let's do a big project and get it all done. It does, he's optimistic that they can still do with Hondo this year.
Who's he?
But, Darren McKeskey, Fort Bend County graduate. But, that's, we have the size of project that they're going to add on at the end of something else. Like, we have a day that we didn't get, we didn't use, we have material, we're going to come, call the guys, deliver the things, whatever. But, so, I apologize, I don't have the next quarter financial statement for you, Julie just was covered up this week, and we didn't get that done.
So...
But, looking at March, just a reminder, that in tax pool in March... Oh, please.
Keep it going.
Yeah, $387,000, so, it does not decrease, but, so, if this council wants to add to road funds, we, we would encumber it, we would put it in as it's coming from external, and then we would also show it going out as, as an expense in this budget.
Good question.
Yes.
Okay, so, you're working with Fort Bend County?
Yeah.
I mean, because I've stuck my nose in it, I happen to know that you're making progress with them, and that possibly we could get stuff done this next year. And so, in the, in that process, they're basically saying they could put you on the schedule, I think that's what they told you, and that you had some road changes that we all, we all know about, right? We changed the roads, and that's what they have to have to make their next step into proposing what you can get done. And we pay for the materials.
Right.
But, there was a, there was an if in there, if we can.
That's right.
So, the county...
That's what I'm saying.
Right, so, no, no, I'm saying, if we can, they may chip in for even that. And that's up to them to go to the commissioner's court, or whoever they have to go to, and try to get that done. So, what they're saying is, they want to help, they want to help.
You've been extremely generous with Simonton over the years.
Right, and so, while we're looking at basically a million plus that we could have, and the first wave was just those, what, three or four roads?
Yeah, that's just, not just, but that's been previously by council to pay for out of county, city funds.
I understand, I understand.
Then, we've got the $900,000 that'll be in the grant, and all the roads to go with that, that we, I mean, we're banking on Fort Bend County to partner with us and do that.
Mm-hmm.
And that's how we submitted the grant, we put the interlocal agreement, and they're going to stand by it, but the other projects, like you said, fall in the line where they could fit us.
So, is this going to be a new interlocal agreement when you get this done, right, with that? Because they got to, they got to do a new interlocal agreement with us.
We already have the agreement for the grant, you have to do that when you apply.
For the grant, yes, I'm talking about for the work from Fort Bend to County.
Yeah, each time, each time we make a request, or if something different is along the schedule, you make an addition or amendment towards the commissioner's court.
We do have, for clarification, we do have an interlocal agreement with them for doing the work from the grant.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Yes.
But, we want to do more than what's in the grant, right? So, if the money, if the money in the grant paid for materials, and they said, "We're coming in, just name me your roads," or whatever, right, then we could get those roads done, flat out. Now, we don't know what that material cost is, because they have to calculate it.
That's true, but when they came out and met a couple of months ago, the material costs have not dramatically changed, so the estimates that we have are still valid.
Was it 257,000 a mile or something?
Something, something in that neighborhood.
Right? I mean, shit, that's several miles we got.
Well, so, my question is, think about it, if you, if you want us to increase the road projects outside of the grant, and outside of the three roads that we've already designated, now's the time to put that project into the budget and determine where it's coming from.
We can't go wrong with the money we already get in, the what, quarter cents or something that comes for roads?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, that's, just keep coming in, keep coming in, right?
Right, that's about $50,000.
Yeah, right, that's 53,764, forty, no, anyway, fifty-something thousand. So, we know that would take ten years to get a half a million, right? So, the money's got to come from somewhere else. We have a grant, God bless us, we have a grant for a large amount of money.
Again.
And whatever else, and whatever else we have. So, I think we're probably very close to the time where we could get, we can get it done, and you can make it happen next year.
I, I'm not worried about that, since we have the grant to kind of be an anchor point for us.
When you say add on, are you referring to when they're doing the grant work, we could request and pay for them to do additional work, or is it like something separate?
It would probably be a separate project.
Okay.
I'm just...
Through the contract company that Fort Bend is referring us to.
I would not want to move.
So, you would have two choices. So, the grant work is going to be done over here.
Correct.
The three roads we already asked for are hopefully going to be done over here, although we might have to bid that out to a third party. And if you want to do additional work, any additional work at all, if Fort Bend County can fit us in the schedule, we'll do it with Bend. If not, we still do an interlocal agreement with them, but then, they are the connector to the vendor, kind of like Yellowstone.
Right.
They went to commissioner's court, they got PO, whatever part of the process they did, to connect us, because of the procurement rules about the vendor.
But, how long, because the money was there, and we inquired about getting road work done, and Fort Bend hasn't been able to help, how long has it been since we've been asking that Fort Bend hasn't been able to help? Meaning, has it been years?
Year and a half, two years on this segment?
So, I think at this point, we need to go ahead and start looking at, go in a different route with that, and not keep waiting on them. It would be great.
Right.
What's the cost difference between Fort Bend County and using a third party?
We were talking in general terms, it wasn't doubled, but let's say, we budgeted $150,000 to do those three roads, and we're probably 235?
Almost double.
Conservatively.
And that's...
So, close to double, it's terrible, but that's what I'm saying.
How long, like, how long, how many more years do we wait, and fingers crossed that they can get us in? That's all my question, you know?
Right.
Don't disagree.
Well, the only thing I've said, well, she's made progress, it can happen, it can happen.
With Fort Bend?
With Fort Bend, in this next year.
For the three streets.
And they've said they don't do work in the wintertime.
Oh, yeah.
Because of weather and everything, but as soon as you hit spring or whatever, they would be here.
So, are you suggesting we wait?
No, what I'm suggesting is, we probably use Fort Bend as a resource to save money.
No, I...
And we, and we get them to actually price the whole damn thing out with the materials, because that's what they do. And then, when we get the material costs, we can make a decision that says, "Damn, let's add a road, let's get these done."
So...
Because we all want them done.
So, they always do that for us. We have never done a road, we've never had an outside vendor do a road, they've been able to fit us in. They, just the county's growing so fast, but their resources are not increasing, and that's why they aren't having time to fit everybody in.
So, we can't say, wait till the spring and they'll get it done?
There's no guarantee. The, the one project that will happen on schedule is this grant, because stars have to align to make all the things happen for that. But, the three roads that we've requested for two years in a row, we don't know.
So, what roads, what roads are in the grant? You say, you keep saying the grant, we have to spend the grant, but what are we doing with the grant money?
The grant is very specific to which drainage items are being done, and which roads are being done.
And they came to...
Wagon is a significant portion of the whole budget, because it's getting a complete rebuild.
Okay.
From X-point to, I think, all the way down at the end of street.
Right.
So, then, there are feeders and pieces and parts of streets that are happening. I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want it.
So, we don't have to worry about wagon, it's in the grant money?
It's not, well...
I don't know.
A lot of it.
A lot of wagon, not all of it, not all of it was needed to be done, and don't forget that we applied for this in 2022. So, conditions have continued to deteriorate while we waited three years for the award.
I understand.
Be four years by the time we do the work, so...
Essentially, it's from Comanche to Cheyenne.
That's all, one wagon?
That's a long stretch.
Yeah, no, but if you went from the front of the road, I mean, when you first get in, though...
See, that has to qualify for grant money, too.
Yeah.
You can't just say, "It's efficient, let's do the whole thing," that's not how they work. If you want that, then you pay for the additional mile or half mile or whatever.
So, again, Fort Bend is involved in that?
Yes.
Okay, and so, they have to, they know that they have grant money and they can do a road. And so, it's obvious to them that if they're going to come here and do one road, do the rest of our roads. They got all the equipment here, they're tearing everything up.
They got the entire county, so, if they want to be efficient, if we are ready to go, and we've asked for this, this, and this, whenever you can fit us in, we've budgeted, we've been to commissioner's court, we have all the agreements in place, if they can fit it and do it efficiently, all while they're here, they will. So, now's the time to decide, are we going to budget additional dollar or no? Are we just going to stay with what we've already got in the harbor?
Which is the three streets.
You've got more money than you need for the three streets.
You have to put it in the budget.
I understand.
That's, that's what we're saying. We don't have more money than the three streets. The council, previous council approved, I'm going to use round numbers, $150,000, because we used our, our chart that was made by LJA, we had a meeting and made sure it was still workable for pricing and distance and toss per mile with the county, and then the council decided, "All right, for our $150,000, we can get this road, this road, and this road done." So, that was the request that was made.
So, where is that, those funds, encumbered, right, they're encumbered?
So, I was saying, it's, it's $150,000 or change.
But where?
Will be encumbered.
Where are we going to find it? I mean, they, they don't...
That was the note I took when we started this discussion, to make sure if it belongs in, it should be in road repair major, just so that it's accounted in the right spot.
So, we would have the GLO money and that money, and just get over a million, whatever in there?
Well, the GLO money is in the other two lines. Well, the GLO money is in the other two lines.
Right, so there should be separate, right? We don't want GLO mixed with whatever else we do, do we? The numbers.
This is just record keeping. The money itself is separate and the invoices would come, and the accounts are separate. Everything is separate about that. This is just saying road repair, major or minor, for a total. You'll have a total number there.
Okay. I'm just back to the encumbered process, right? So if the previous council said, we want to put $150,000 in.
Right.
That has to still be there.
That's correct.
And it should be encumbered to that point.
That is correct.
I don't see it anywhere.
That's why I told you when we first started talking that I think I have an error. I need to go check this line.
Okay.
And I wrote on the sheet and I got it on the list. Because I also think that $53,000 from last year should be included in the encumbrance.
Correct.
So you're right, I got it though.
Okay.
So if we agree to, either way, whether it would be third party or with Fort Bend, if we agree for more roadwork, would we want to put it into the budget using tax revenue? Or would we want to say, hey, this is money that we're going to pull from reserves? Like, how do you?
So the tax revenue coming in, you dedicate to that. Because you know it's coming, your best estimate that it's coming. And if you want to have available funding for anything else additional, at this point, you pull it from reserves.
So we would just have to agree, excuse me, agree on what we wanted to do, how much we wanted to pull from reserves?
Right.
Because that, pulling from the reserves, that doesn't, it's not going to show in our budget.
I'll actually add it to the budget and it'll have a note. And it'll say, council's going to spend $300,000 from tax pool, blah, blah, blah. It'll be noted where it came from. So it'll come in as an expense and as an income line item.
Got it.
So it'll net zero, but it'll show in the budget and fund view in all the places.
All right.
So it's easy to track.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So Lori, there's a split of everything is what's concerning me. You're making progress with Fort Bend. They're basically saying that we're going to work with you and maybe if everything, if all the stars align and Commissioner's Court does what you think they need to do and all the stars align, we could possibly get some roadwork next spring. And we need to be prepared with the funds to do as much as we think we want to do. We just got to decide besides those three roads, what we want to do besides Honda, we said?
Honda's the worst one, is why we keep referring.
Wagon, which is in the GLO. All of that probably needs to be in the same, in a local agreement and everything else that we're trying to push. Because if you don't have, if you don't.
They, we have done the agreements separately. So we have two agreements now. If you want to do anything else, you budget the money, then you'll decide where it's going to be applied. And then we get an agreement.
So you have an agreement on the GLO money to do roads with them?
Eximal of yeah.
Okay, and they have already given you the price for material?
We use an estimate. You don't know the exact price until the day you buy it, but yes.
Understood, but they're the ones who estimate that, right?
That's right.
Okay, and so we have pretty current an estimate of what it costs.
Yes, yes.
Maybe if we had that number and said, okay, so for the rest of these, this is probably what we really can add to get them to do it. Because we pay for materials.
That is correct.
That's why I threw this number out of 250,000 a mile. I don't know where I got it from, I got it from somewhere. But you take those crossroads and, I don't know, I don't think any of them are a mile, are they? Maybe the longest one is the one that we cross over to get across everything.
I don't know, those notes was neat, but I don't know. I mean, how many miles is it total? Do you remember?
I'm drawing it out of my head. I hate to say it because then I'll be wrong. We have this data for the entire neighborhood. And some for Ash and Nails over here, by the way, got to remember. It's not just Valley Lodge that needs them. It is the worst condition though because of the flooding. So we, that's how the decision would be made by council. All right, we think we can afford to spend $200,000 or whatever your number is. And then you decide, I want to look at this road, this road, this road. Go out there, you have the county come and look and say, can we do an overlay? Or is this so far gone it needs refill? Whichever one. Or you can do it the opposite way. Take the sheet, go out there and figure out, you know, the next three terrible worst roads are or the highest travel or however you want to decide it. We have the resources to help figure out which ones they are and what's the estimated cost.
So we know, we know the whole subdivision, including section one, one of them that has gravel road.
Yeah.
And if we wanted to price the whole thing and then take a suggestion that you either go off a bond or you go to the voters and you say, look, we need this much money. It's not just your ad verbatim tax, it's going to be some kind of a other assessment of some kind, right? Then we would be, we would be basically done with the initial total analysis of our entire area, our two mile area, of what could, what could be, what could be. Not what you're going to do. And then the council comes in and says, wow, I don't think, I don't think I want to go to the voters. I don't think I want to do a bond. And you just bring it back down to what we can do or we feel as a council we can do. Because the other thing is, is if you had an election, it would have to be in a November general election, right? To get a bond or anything out there?
I believe so.
Yeah, and then that's going to cost us seven, eight thousand. But they're already going to have voting machines in this area for the November election. So it shouldn't cost us.
Oh, it's still costing. That's even with the machines right here.
They want to rip you off. Anyway, so the point is, is that if you threw that out to the voters one time and they said, oh, hell no, then we're done with that. We go on to plan two or three. But I keep hearing roads and I keep hearing roads and we all want them done. We all want all of them done. It's just a matter of when.
I don't disagree with you.
So it may be four councils from now that finally get it done.
I was going to say, I think that project is a little bit bigger than being able to accomplish this by the end of September.
Accomplish.
Figuring out about.
Oh, the whole thing?
If there's going to be a master plan, do we want to wait and do nothing this year because?
No, no, no.
We can't go for bond at this late date, but just saying.
Yeah, I'm not saying we want to stop anything that we're trying to do right now because hell, we're making progress. It's just that, so what? The next council's going to bring this up again and the next council's going to bring it up again.
Right now, I think more than anything, we're at the mercy of the county. So we need to make a decision if we want to go third party.
Or have all our ducks in a row, have everything done, ready, budgeted, gone to Commissioner's Court, have everything ready to go. So that would, yeah. And then we have to just decide if we're pulling money from reserves to do that or if we're, yeah. And then if Fort Bend says, we still can't do you, then we can revisit it and be like, okay, well, and we have to possibly look at. I just know that they need to be done and I don't want to spend money frivolously, but, or take from reserves. It might be needed for something else, God forbid, but I just know that was a really big concern of everybody.
But it would be nice to make some progress.
Absolutely.
So if we need to make the decision on to take it from reserves, just so we can have some progress then, I think we need to do that.
If you're not interested, you're not ready yet to bite off a big chunk, you could say, all right, we have 150 or, let's say it's $200,000 already committed for previous budgets, but we're going to have to bid this out. So we're going to add X dollars, 150 to it, so that we're in position to bid it out, to take it to the third party. If the county says by April they can't do it this year, then you're financially ready to go to the third party and contract it out. Just another idea.
Yeah.
Following up what you're saying.
Yeah, just be ready and then if it doesn't happen, then still have a plan B that we're still ready for. Yeah, that's what I think we need to do.
Okay. We all sleep on that.
Are they scheduled for the GLO project at all yet?
It's pencil because you can't do it until the grant, it goes through stages. There's work going on now. The earliest time it could start, I want to say April or May.
Oh, this next year.
Which is good, it's in the asphalt season, but.
Right, it's a great target to throw the rest in.
I don't know if they would do it at the same time, but there's no reason we can't be prepared.
Right.
I mean, we're already prepared for the two projects that are on the table. We're not prepared to go third party and pay the extra money just to get our, to get our Honda three road project done.
Got it.
And then it's not budgeted to add anything else to it. So if we do three roads and this big chunk that's in the grant, there won't be anything else next year. I mean, it could be the following, but just so you know, if you're thinking, man, the next three terrible roads are, you have to be thinking about that. All right, page 14. You see the other half of grants there. That's the total, the summary total there. Page 15. So this is what I was talking about, that like, why do we have this redundant information? It's just how the system works in the financial software. So 14, 13, 14, 15, very much the same. 16 starts at EDC A. How EDC wrote their budget and I've just filled it, filled it in here. They'll have to let me know if you see anything that's a discrepancy.
I guess now it brings you back.
I meant from the EDCs.
Yeah. Now it brings me back to Justin to, do they have to pay us for anything?
So if you look on.
Does the EDC pay us back for anything, everything that we do for them?
Well, they paid for the lawsuits, but you're talking about.
No, no, no.
You're talking about administrative.
Right.
So look on page 19.
$1,000?
So there's 14, 15 supplies, about $1,100 in administrative and $1,000 in accounting and audit. So they contribute a portion to the audit.
So did, when's your last audit?
They're included in the city audit.
Was it in Breedlove's? I've got nothing from Breedlove on the EDCs.
Yeah, everything is included.
I remember nothing.
They also had almost no transactions other than mowing and a couple of things. So it wasn't, it's not a huge.
It wouldn't have been a huge.
The income is accounted for, but it's not a ton of activity like it is on the city.
By rule, aren't you supposed to have your own audit separate from us?
No.
No? Check it out.
I will look into that for sure.
Professionals.
So I'm sorry, Lori, I just, I'm stuck on this dead on thing. When I go back and look at what we are claiming as income from them, that's why I said rest goes all the way to the back end. EDC.
No, just one question.
The question is, if we are claiming we're getting input from, income from them, they have to be claiming that equal expense.
That's right.
Okay. So EDC Technology Fund.
Zero.
Well, it was 28,000. Insurance fees was 4,000, administrative 4,000. Page three, sorry.
So you're looking at the rolled up pages from the EDCs? And here, these are individual line items, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm just talking about in general. If I'm saying I'm getting $7,000 from them in an audit fee and then you come down here and he's saying he's only going to, what's his charge? Well, I'm looking at the 24 current, the current budget.
What page?
Three.
Okay. Tell me now, which one are you talking about?
2024, if you look at 2024, there was all of these figures. Somebody in 2025 said put it all to zero.
I did, because there was no income that came from it.
Correct, because they didn't do anything, right? Very little of anything.
100-42.
Right. So that's why I recommended zero, because the income did not come.
So you're recommending zero again? No. In 26, what are we going to get from the EDCs?
Where it says 25 working, that's what we're talking about.
It's 25, 26.
So you're saying we're not going to get anything from the EDCs as income? No reimbursement at all?
For these items?
I'm missing one.
Yes. Okay, let's try again.
I believe you're asking that in the current year for 24, there was 28, 4, 4, 7. We are not going to get those as a city from the EDCs this year. Why did we need these at that time?
I have to go back to last year and look.
And then.
And see why we budgeted those in there.
Well, I can.
I don't remember, I was talking.
I can understand zeroing it out because somebody in 25 was.
I think I have a brief under working.
Okay, so again.
See what you mean though about if the audit, if they pay their audit fee, wouldn't it show there? And it should be automated that that rolls up in the right place.
Same thing as administrative services right now, 1,100. We should have an income line from EDC A for 1,100. Right? Okay. Well, we don't.
Okay, got it.
So we need to take that whole set that you have in your budget and say.
It's got to show up.
I need to find out if there is a loop or something missing in fund view.
It's the same thing with B, by the way, that.
They'd be identical.
Right. Okay. That was one of the big ones I had because I'm going, how could it be zero?
All right, so back to you, Justin, for EDC A. I know I took your budget and plugged it in.
Okay.
That y'all approved preliminary approval and sent to us. If you see anything that's an error, please let me know.
Make a note here, sorry.
That's okay. We will make some adjustments to make sure it balances with the expected income.
Um. Do you still have those?
I do.
So, Justin, on website, 1,500, do you have a separate website?
That one's mine.
No, that's a portion we paid.
Okay, so that also should come back to us, right?
Yes.
All right.
Do you need your budget page real quick?
I'm sorry, Lori, I talked while you were talking. But the website, 1,500, needs to come back as a.
That's what we were talking about.
It's credit. It needs a debit.
Right, right.
Credit, right, the cities.
Right.
We did speak about it earlier, so.
Administrative services. You can, you can check them out, right? You know which ones they are?
Now I'm making notes on those now. Because I know they come out.
So professional services. You're going to be paying for something.
Which one?
The.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Kelly about EDC B and the audio visual. What were you asking?
Let me catch this, give me one second.
I know you told me it one time. Did I have the wrong one? Did I keep the right one for KSB coming up next?
Uh, yeah, pretty sure.
Okay. Sorry, I need to take those to get answers. What was the question?
What was the question?
Any other question?
Well, we were just going through once you're moving that you're going to be doing. No, the 18,000, I'm sorry. Professional services, 18,000 is a big jump. What did you take on that you're going to do that you pay for professional services?
The one we're looking at there is to look at, the consultant for EDCs, how they help, how we can help the zoning and what we need to do, what we need to have in place ahead of time, working with a consultant to be able to put all our package together.
Okay, so, kind of.
Okay.
It's not the total cost, right? It's just, you have 18,000 saying, I'm going to contribute. I'm planning on contributing to.
To consulting, to work on this, yes.
Whatever, whatever that you can take on.
Correct.
Good placeholder. All right, and then.
And no, we don't have a date at this time. We don't have an outlined project on it. We don't have any of the, if you had a formal project laid out, this is rough estimate numbers.
Right, so when you do, it's supposed to come back to council, right?
When we have.
To spend.
When there's an agreement.
When there's an agreement, yes. The agreement will have to come back to council, for sure.
All right.
I mean, the idea would be with the agreement to meet the numbers that are shown, then hey, we've already budgeted for it. This is just the approval for.
Spending the money, right.
Correct.
Okay. Excellent, yeah, makes sense.
So then as we move through EDC A and see the granular detail, I don't know why I'm using that term today, but anyway. Page 22, you can see the mowing at City Hall. EDC A pays for mowing here and contributes to Christmas lights. That's what $1,250 is indicated and we put them on the tree in the building.
Is that independent of what we pay for, for cutting? So.
The EDCs pay for it.
The EDC, yeah, the EDCs pay for the mowing.
So we have, huh?
The city doesn't.
Well.
The funds come into the city and then goes to the EDCs. The EDCs pay for it.
So there are other, hold on. I understood that the total.
When you get to EDC B in a minute, you'll see that they have 30,000 or 35,000 in it. And they pay for it, like right away.
Got it. That's why I was going, right.
A only pays because it's here at City Hall. It's more applicable to their board. B pays for the bigger piece. So, and it's called out in B as well. I was just pointing out so that you can see, there's a note out there for what it is. EDC B also turned in there, budget. Not a huge number of changes, but I did add a couple of notes on page 28, just calling out about the administrative service and accounting like we were talking a minute ago.
Can we go back?
They also have added 30,000. They've moved their money around, so they are setting aside or preparing $30,000 for professional services, like Justin was talking about a second ago.
Can we go back?
To what?
To page 25. Page 25, you have a grant expense, right? It was 25,000, and we're now saying it's 10,000. So, do we spend the 25,000?
25 to take. So that's rolled up on another line. Let's figure out which line. I don't remember why we're doing grants.
Well, there was, the thing that shocked me was going back, we had a $90,000 grant expense that disappeared. Now I don't know where it was then. Anybody know?
I don't know which, you have to be more specific about where or what.
I'll send you the note, but it's like a couple of years ago, we had $90,000 in grant. And the grant is, we giving the money away to incentivize or get something done in the business or whatever, right?
So after hurricane, I think it was before Harvey, I think it was in 2016.
Oh, tax day.
Tax day.
On Memorial Day.
I know that Labor Day. I don't know which one.
We got so many, so many holidays.
A flood event or multiple-
You keep putting on holidays, damn it.
And there was, uh, grants available for businesses to help them get reopened and established. Reyes was a participant, I think Ropers might have been. That's the last big, big, um, offering like that, that I recall, but we could certainly go back and look it up.
Hmm. Yeah, cause, well, Ropers got flooded, but they would have had-
Does it portate to this, though? This budget, right?
No, no, I'm just saying, you got, you got a big number for grants and grants just stuck in my mind. That grants is, I'm giving money away. And, and that's what EDCs are supposed to do as for developing new business and getting more income coming in, right? And as a main-
Business or-
Main reason you do it within an EDC. And so, it'd be nice if we had another bar or restaurant to tax. Okay, I'm sorry.
I think EDCs are working to understand a bigger scope picture, that they can also bring the city council and hopefully propose, I'm gonna say a partnership of zoning and, and all the things that surround it, not just zoning. So that each entity could be working on their parts. And so, I think we learn a whole lot more about how that can work well as they're ready to bring it to present.
I got it. Opening the clubhouse back up.
That's not a bad idea.
That's great.
You know, give me a grant. I'll take $150,000 and I will redo that sucker back the way it used to look.
Let's do it first.
I'll even put the swimming pool back behind it.
Okay.
And I'll make it a museum. I mean, that's all good.
We would like it to be in the city limits, please.
It already is. Lori, it is in the city limits. The lodge is itself. There's that little marker, it's just on the left side. By that country, there's, there's a magic marker.
Let's get the club open again.
It's in an EDC though, right? So it can be requested to be done in EDC.
It is in the city.
And open the gate, that's to where we can drive there from-
Oh no, that's a different story.
These are my ones.
Okay, okay, I got it.
My list list.
Tell you what, when you get the county to raise the damn levy so I don't get flooded out every little, little bit of water that comes in.
Okay, that's a perfect grant.
Yeah. There you go, another one.
That's right.
I'm gonna get a lot of grants.
Page 31. Lighting and landscaping.
I'll even sell it.
That's where you see the mowing, the $30,000 for mowing. They're actually reducing their, their expenditure on mowing a little bit.
Well, I'm sorry.
In order to fund their other project.
Lori, you're going fast. My brain. Legal for B is 33,000 from 7,000. What are we planning on spending legal, 33,000?
What page are you on?
I'm on page 25, bucket ever.
Okay, I'm on 33, hold on.
Oh, that's what you're saying.
Have you just been talking and where are we then?
I don't know.
Yeah, right, it's like, hello?
Catch up. Is that the legal required for, um...
Oh, there doesn't seem to be.
See, there's some notes on y'all's page.
That's a lot, huh?
Hell, yeah.
Whoa, did you put it in there?
No, I didn't.
So y'all have to check it, see if I got your key to the country.
And then one right below it also, maintenance and repair. I don't know what EDCB repairs, but it's 32,000. It just-
I had, yeah, we had notes on that during our meeting, so I don't want to talk that up.
My ring 30,000. What are, what am I looking for?
We're looking at legal and professional. They went from 7,500 to 32,000. I think we just have something.
Where are the, uh, where are the, well, where are the numbers on the side? On this page? Like everybody else has-
It's on a summary page. If there are no numbers on the side, you're on a summary page. You gotta keep going to it at the back. Do you, do you even see it? I don't see it, but it could be me.
And Lori put the main-
What page did you say that was on?
Page 25, 25. That's your summary page. It's 33 and 32. Those are the two figures of the question.
It's a lot of professional. It's coming from here. It's professional services.
Oh, here's another. 22, 5.
And we're not, that is right. It's not, it's professional. That's, and maybe we have it in the law.
5, 5, 2, so?
Legal. Right, but I think legal and professional is, is two things.
It rolls up together.
So, but just, that's what that is.
What is it?
So legal and professional roll up together.
Together.
It's two different things. It's a main bucket for-
This is the summary, it'll be broken down.
Whether it's legal or they have a professional service. And then the subcategories breaks it up on page 28.
Look on page 28, Eric.
Okay.
Yeah, there it is.
That's why, cause I- There's the $30,000 for professional services.
And what is that?
For consultant.
Consulting.
For projects?
Zoning, specifically.
So wait, so you're gonna do zoning?
I was just saying, they are going, they are going to propose to do some broader work around, as part of zoning, to understand the next steps of things that need to be done. What could the EDCs be doing and contributing? So they're working to be helpful with zoning, but also make sure that we're got our house in order.
So, so you're gonna have 30,000 and we're gonna have 100 and something thousand.
Ours is, are the budget money that the council in, without the EDCs has encumbered is specific to the zoning project.
I understand.
They're talking about some things that can contribute if needed to the cost of zoning, but also help them line out, what do the EDC projects look like for the next five years? How do they surround zoning? What needs to go in accompaniment with zoning? That sort of thing. They're not ready to present it yet.
I understand.
I'm giving a high level-
Snipping, doing all, everything together.
So, right now, zoning, which everybody wants to do, is, is most critical because the one thing we've all heard is we don't want a cement plant on that 93 acres, right?
That's, that's one of the big ones.
That's a big one. Now, now Ford Bend County has that as agriculture.
Currently.
Right, well, currently. Ours is residence. And so a lot of, a lot of the definitions of what those pieces of property are, are done in Ford Bend County.
Hmm, I think that, that one can change.
Well, we can change anything when we become the keeper of the keys for, for zoning.
If we have it outlined, we can.
Correct.
We can say what it can use. But until then, they can use it for-
So, I don't wanna put a damper on the conversation, but we need to stay on the budget here. If we wanna change something down the line in zoning, I mean, zoning is relevant specifically, but let's don't go too far down the rabbit hole.
Erica, I think when EDCB presents this to council, it'll be more clear. We're not ready for that yet. So, don't, don't put a lot of weight on this yet, okay?
Okay, so the only weight I wanna put on any of it is that we don't want just one option and pay a whole bunch of money to consultants and do all that kind of stuff. If there's a quicker, easier solution, including some software, that could do it for us and have us done.
Understood.
Okay.
So we are-
What are the requirements?
We are going down all these avenues, which is why we are not ready to present. So that's why I said, don't put a lot into that right now.
Wait, let's go.
It's an earmark at this point.
I got it. And it's good.
The other thing is since they receive, they're funded by tax revenue, they've got tax revenue coming in and they need to assign it to something that they're gonna do.
Right.
So it's not, they'd like to spend $30,000 on consulting and they're gonna take that away from something else that the city's working on. If that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they have their own pocketbooks.
Yeah, but council still has to approve what we've spent. So we can't spend a dime without a permit.
Okay. Then I'll wait to bring up the other potential solutions if anybody talks to me or later, when it comes up.
I think there'll be a lot of sharing and-
There will be.
The teams working together, it, it won't be in a vacuum, for sure.
No.
I think they're volunteers, the teams, the folks that wanted to be engaged on the EDCs, I think are excited to be working on bringing in pieces and parts that then they can share and everybody can work on it. That's my perception, anyway.
Okay.
Okay, we ready to move on to page?
What's what?
Any page you like, but the next specific one, page 31, is EDCB lighting and landscaping. That's what I was saying, is, is their portion. They pay for mowing with the right of ways. They're reducing that a little bit this year in order to fund their other project.
So which, which lighting is that?
It's mowing. It's just, it was named lighting and landscaping when Fund View was populated.
Was it?
Then, um-
I think there was some electrical that was done early on, so we split it.
Yeah. We put lighting out by the monument sign at the front of the building here and-
Which is why I think it-
The light pole, light and stuff like that.
Oh, okay. So the, on lighting, we pay for those three lights, I think three or four, $300 a month or something like that. And I think I said it before Lori, but the ones at the park are always on 24/7, so half of the time-
The park and Valley Lodge?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't pay for that. POA does.
POA does, we want it done at the, at the park.
Well, those lights are always on, and if they had a sensor on them, you could pay half the price for that electricity. I thought I saw $300 in our, in our budgets for, for those lights. We talked about it before.
Now, is the one that's on the pole, like the street light.
Always on.
That would, is what we would be responsible for here.
But the park lighting?
Is, that's POA.
So I understood there was three that we pay for.
Uh-huh.
Alright, so where are they? That's one, on the pole.
One is pulling the subdivision at-
Chisholm.
Chisholm. There's one on wagon.
Towards the end, right, towards Cheyenne, right?
There's one, there's, there's one right across the street from my house.
Okay.
Lucky you, free life.
I looked at it when I bought my house, for sure. And then where's the other one? There's another one further over, I just don't, I don't remember where that one's at.
So just an observation, they're always on. You drive during the day, they're always on. I don't know about those, cause I don't drive there, right?
Right, right.
The ones at the park are POA. The ones that are on the poles, those are ours.
And they both have the same problem, they're on too much.
Well, the, ours are only on at 90.
Ours has a sensor.
They have a sensor.
The, the one that the city pays for. Sensor burns out, so what happens is the sensor burns out and you're on all the time. Or you're off all the time, right? Yes.
Right. So the one, I know, I know the one across from my house is off and then the one coming into the subdivision is off during the day.
So what I noticed was the $300 for the lights, like, and I'm going, well, sure, if we are on 24/7, we could cut that in half.
Because if it's not a flat fee.
And they actually do it. Center point comes and changes the sensors if it's on.
I believe it's a fat, I believe it's a flat fee.
$300 flat fee? I think that's right.
Okay, I don't have the Hudson Energy bills here. It's three separate bills for the various items, and I'll be happy to get that for you. We don't have public works, so if anybody can verify the other one, whether it really, what its functionality really is, then we could certainly make a service call or a request for help to get that updated, to get the sensors checked. That'd be great.
Thanks.
I don't really-
I'll swing by after our FS meeting today and then, cause there'll be a poll number. Cause there's a number on the polls that you can take out and then it's on.
I'll have to do it.
So there's not really anything that's big, new or unusual in EDC?
B? So-
B.
One more question on the, you reduced business assistance from 25 to 10. I don't know, I'm just questioning. It's a good thing, but how were we able to do that?
Uh, should I make notes?
I think you'll just make notes that you are moving funds over to your consultant.
Because we saw that we weren't using it, so we just moved it around.
Okay.
To find out the schedule.
Alright, so keep silent and beautiful starts on page 35. KSB is self-funded with the exception of a sponsorship or franchise fee that comes from Texas Pride. So most of their income will come from fundraising at the events.
What comes from Texas? What comes from Texas Pride?
As a sponsorship.
Part of the funding.
Part of the franchise.
Where is it?
I haven't pulled it in.
Thanks, got it.
Wait, no, I'm saying the line.
We haven't gotten it.
Okay, let me step into it then.
Cause that would help us a great deal.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Two years we haven't received it. Okay.
So who gives it to them?
In other words, they, for other, other funding.
Part of their contract states that they give us that money strictly to KSB.
That's great.
To go back into the community.
Yeah.
Cause you hear a lot of complaints about them. Be nice to get their money.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
I think the biggest changes for KSB is that we're gonna, we're putting in money for new signs and stuff like that for the roundups and-
You told me that that beautification, y'all were talking about the monument. I don't know if it belongs there as a descriptor or something else, but I just added it on the line. This is page 38.
Oh, geez.
Oh, there's nothing else.
It's the last.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh-
But mind-
But what was your statement, I'm sorry?
I added this note that's here and just to make sure that's right. Or if you want it off or- Not this time.
May I come on? Cause we're wanting to do a fundraiser to lead you up to it, so if, we may be able to move that one, you're right. I don't know, but I, let's leave it there for now.
Okay. Great. And then, I don't know if everybody has it, but for some reason I have page seven from the beginning again in the back of my book.
Yep.
Sorry about that, it's just random.
Yeah, we can do that one.
And then that, that final page is just a screenshot of that fund view, so you could see the working totals at the time. We just took two pages of notes of updates and changes and corrections, so we'll get another copy now. By the time we're through with it, it needs to be a balanced budget. But like we've said, it'll reflect ad valorem income, all the estimated sources of income, and include everything that's encumbered.
When do we-
And grant money.
When do we get that?
On our workshop on Tuesday. All the changes that we talked about today, I'll have updated in the deal. So, today's Saturday, I'm not really gonna promise that I'll send it to you today, but I'll try to get it to you by Monday, so you can at least browse before we have our workshop on Tuesday evening.
Alright, so you say we have $134,000 that we think we're gonna have extra this year. Is that correct? Wanna look at this?
No, we have some things that-
No, I was just saying that this isn't balanced by 134,000. Remember I said there's 150,000 of EDC correction and then we've identified a few things. I'll give you an update on that. Once I make these changes, it'll-
Rose was one of them that she was gonna look into.
Yeah, there's a bunch there.
Yeah. So, maybe by Tuesday we'll be balanced, but probably not. Close.
So the, uh-
And if, if-
You taking a selfie?
If we have uncommitted or uncommitted money.
Looking at the dates.
If we have uncommitted by then, you know, this, this help, this is our working total. It helps us know if we're, where are we versus income and planned expenditures? income and planned expenditures, and then you'll have everything you need to know hopefully to make decisions about the tax rate. So I started this budget using the voter approval rate. If we need to make adjustments or change, that's what we're doing this next couple of meetings.
So.
So it'll help you with that.
The reason why I asked about money left over is that we already talked and you, you have notes already about making things encumbered, right? And so if we can.
Continuing to do that.
If we make things encumbered, truly need to be, just carry that money over, then that means you don't have to tax me again to get that money.
Correct.
Right? So our, our pennies that we can choose go further.
That's right.
And it could be moved somewhere else. And so, we, I think where our consciousness needs to be is like, well, what should we encumber if we haven't already encumbered it? Because we mentioned some this time and the 30,000 for him is one of the big ones in my mind, because pick a number and it's probably been just washed out, washed out every year to go to general fund or somewhere. But if we encumber it.
It's the reserves, but yes.
You know, I don't even like the word reserve, but I'd rather say his is rainy day fund, because everything that could do with y'all is rainy day fund, right? There's different words, that's all. So if we can encumber as much as we can, then the next year, because we're limited on taxation, whatever, we'll find ourselves still having money to do other things and to put into efforts around here, including roads and zoning and whatever else you want. Without having to go out or even get the 3.5% more, that's all. 12,000.
And she took notes on all that stuff, so.
I did.
Hopefully.
I'm just hoping.
And we didn't really talk about the, because we talked about it briefly last meeting, but they, y'all keep reading the articles and looking, doing the research, the economic indicators, you know, we've seen how much our property values went down. And we didn't talk about it specifically because it's written for Tuesday, but that chart right there and that you all have in your book, it's just showing you the math. If we don't take the no new revenue rate, let's say we stay at 21 cents, it shows you there, that'd be a $60,000 reduction versus the budget that we have right now for this year. Not a good path to go on, that's because the home values, the property values are lower.
Money coming in less.
Mm-hmm, the money coming in, that's why the, the no new revenue rate is 27 cents, when the current rate's 21 cents, you're like, how does that make sense? That's why I.
Well, it makes sense, right. I understand why it makes sense, right, and.
So sales tax is lower, it's coming in lower than it was estimated for this year, we're gonna end up short for that. It's not gonna, I, I thought we would be significantly behind, but it's not as bad as all that. We'll have another update on the 15th when our tax information comes in from the state, sales tax. So we'll have an even better idea how we're closing. So, being conservative about expenditure because we know that that sales tax portion's gonna be smaller is really important. We renewed our energy contract, but it's gone up a penny per kilowatt and it's expected to just skyrocket the next four years. Keeping a finger on the pulse of all of those things, we'll make the decision in that one. And Eric, you should have in your packet of eight and a half by 11 size of that.
Here's one in the packet.
If it's helpful, I mean, take it if you want to. I taped one on the table so people can see it on Tuesday and we'll put some out there.
I got glasses on.
Help folks understand, you know, see the math too.
So we don't, you know, it's, it's really is hard to predict the future, politically, things are happening, all the other crap that's happening in the world.
Right.
It's really, really hard, the thing you can go with is that, do we believe that our housing prices are gonna go down continuously? I, I don't think so, I think they're gonna jack them back up. Not, what really happened was, not us, the legislature did it to us. When they increased the homestead exemptions, when they increased the things that are gonna reduce your taxes, so that was actually the legislative, right?
That's the first wave.
That's the first wave, I, I saw where some crazy person's predicting one, one cent or 1% as your NNR or whatever.
No more than.
That's not gonna happen. There, there's enough people in there goes, we're not gonna let you do that.
Oh, I was the crazy person that said that because they're considering it in this session.
Well, I'm staying because it's in there, yeah. They consider, they consider a lot of crazy things to do. But you know what, Lori, there are, I call them activists, any one of us could go to, to the state Capitol and talk against any of that stuff, but it's hard, it's real hard to just say, okay, I'm gonna pick up and go to Austin.
Right.
And we don't want to pay for any, like, what do you call them? People who are always there.
Lobbyists.
Yeah, lobbyists.
Anyway, I like facts, numbers, calculations, some of that is, especially real estate, some of it is quantifiable, some of it's not. Sales tax numbers, you know, they, you can make your best estimate. So the more, if you all have any additional information or data about that.
I have.
Send it to me or bring it on Tuesday and we'll make sure that we're using the best numbers we can.
Lori, I think we talked about this in a way, but then I decided, okay, and you told me, well, if you want to go get a bid, this is for us, but one of the Bs would probably do it. But what I did was I called one person on, it's called asphalt renewal, but it's not asphalt renewal, it's the parking lot out here. So if you want to beautify the parking lot, for budgeting, for budgeting items, we can re-stripe that parking lot, power wash it, it's three different things I made them itemize. So honestly, really what we need is to just power wash and you had some kid bid a lot less than this. But the price for striping, $3,925, that if we can find that in a budget. Now, I do know that there was a person who pointed at me and said, you're not, you're parking in the wrong spot, and I said, okay, so I'll just go fix that, I don't want to park in the wrong spot. In addition, I have a drawing that he drew up. Now, we'll share this, I want, I would like to share this with everybody because it is different, it is different. It's actually taken, and this is an in and that's an out, because you have to take in consideration that you got the water tank that it has to be able to leave, you have a trash can that has to be able to leave. So that would be the outside. So the biggest change would be an in and an out and then angular parking. And it, it comes up with, I forget for many, parking spot 17 and two handicaps, we only have one, we probably should have two handicaps. We're all getting over it. I hope they have one of those little blue things.
Before you go, if you'll.
I'd like to give you a take. No, it's, yes, yes, please, please. And then, it's just for consideration, I don't know if we want to throw it in the budget, it's up to council to decide, it's just a little piece of work.
Great, thank you for doing that.
Did he propose multiple layouts?
No, the most efficient one is what he proposed, he says you can go to the, you can go straight in, straight in, straight in, with trucks.
That's my forte. That's my background.
You are not gonna go with the trucks.
Okay, sir. Could you give us a drawing to?
Yeah.
That's why I was curious, well, because I would have, either I'd look.
Look, you can actually call this guy if you want to, his name is on there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, call him. All I'm doing is just starting the engine.
No, no, and I'm not disagreeing, that's why I was asking the questions of, is there for multiple layouts, is he, how did he come up with it, where did he do this volume?
Okay, so we walked, we walked the whole lot, he measured the whole lot, he took a couple of diagrams and I told him, I said, look, I hate parking in narrow spots, I got a truck. I hate parking where you can't hardly back out and almost hit somebody.
That's right.
So design this thing so that it's correct, where people coming in, you actually, if you look at it, you can just come in and you're gonna park in an angle, right? And then you're gonna be able to back right out and go out.
And then the parking is about 12% gang usually.
Right, and then you come around this way and you park in an angle and then you just back up and you go out. So the out is what has to be protected because of the water and.
And the ends, the end is what.
And that means that if you gotta protect that forever, you can't put anybody there. And so you leave, you leave a pan. Take a, take a pan. But we would, I would not recommend doing it all, I would do recommend the striping. And he could do the striping without cleaning, he said, our cement is fantastic, it's in great shape. So I said, I don't care, I want to just, I want to know if we want to do this, power wash it all, bring it back to looking like nice new concrete and then put the stripes down. So, he said, okay, I'll give you a price on that too. And then the last thing was, you know the seams in between that people have been putting?
Spent joints.
Put that in there too. And I said, we're not gonna do that, of course, I don't think we would do that, they look pretty good. He thought our lot is in really great shape, he liked the fact that it was already done this way, when whoever did that in the first place did a good job of laying it out to have water leave the lot, right? And it goes all to the front.
They did a good job, whoever did it.
They did.
That's great. Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you for the quote, I appreciate you doing the homework on that, that is fantastic. Let's adjourn at 10:56.
So, just in time for football.
Remind me, Tuesday we have a workshop.